Yeah, I have probably ten families that are interested currently, but we haven't advertised our registration yet until we get this approval. But then, we've done studies in the past, or surveys, I should say, in the past, a couple of years ago, of interest in gymnastics, and there is high interest in the community.
May I ask?
Yes, Caroline.
Would it be possible for this to go to a committee? Is it possible on this phone to hear everything she's saying? Do you go to a committee, a large committee or something, and then we get more information about this? And I have no idea what she's talking about.
Okay. Krista?
Yeah?
Would you be willing to discuss this? When is their next meeting, though?
The Sunday is Council's seven. November seventh. Basically, Therese, it's up to the council to make a commitment the night of a request. We would definitely need to see proof of insurance before he'd open the doors to you.
I can't show you proof of insurance until I have permission to use this facility.
So we notify, say, contingent upon proof of insurance would be the current priority, but most likely the soonest would be the seventh, based on...
Which is partly into our season already.
A week.
Yeah.
It never existed a week before, which is cool, but it'd be a few weeks left.
We can't take registrations until we get approval from the city.
Well, Caroline just made a suggestion. I was going to ask Krista if she wanted to take it in, but now it sounds like it's a timing issue.
I think we should table it and wait. I mean, one week isn't, it's not that they have competitions or anything like that.
No, we only have approximately, what did we, twelve weeks? That's all we have, because every month has something else going on at the Mueller Center, at least once a month, so the equipment would be taken down. So we only have three weeks each month to have classes. That's including November and February. So it's a very, very short season. And so we were hoping to get everything settled before November, so we could start the first week of November.
Therese, have you gone over the schedule with Twist Cackeys or what?
Yes. Yeah, we've gone over the schedule, and that's why I know that at least once a month, we don't get to use the Friday. So that's why we only have three weeks every month, or from November to February.
I understood you to say that you've talked to four insurance agents...
Yes.
...about insurance. Can you go back and ask them that contingent on the cities, if the city approves, that they can issue the policy immediately, rather than wait for a decision and then approach them, so that whenever the decision comes down from the city, if it's an approval, they would be ready to go with it right away?
Yes, I could talk to them about that. The thing that I understood from the insurance companies is that they need to know how many children are in each age group. So if I have twenty toddlers, and ten, you know, fifth graders, and so on and so on. So we, in order to do that, we have to open registration and have people sign up, but it's not fair to, I guess, have people sign up if the city hasn't agreed.
You'd also have to meet ratios, too, for coaches, I would assume.
Yes.
You wouldn't be able to have one coach for twenty toddlers.
Right.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
It's really just a discussion, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the problem, Therese. It's more prestigious on our end. Communications from the public, for anybody that reads our agenda, they don't see this, oh, the city might do something or act a certain way, because it's only a communication. By you notifying the council now, the next meeting could be a new business item to do what you're proposing. It's just tonight, it's that bad precedent for us to make decisions like this when you're just giving us information the reverse time.
We don't mind.
It's not against the idea, in fact, it's a good use of resources, but just making sure that we go through those to the public and vetting it, as Caroline suggested, to Parks and Rec. And it does, you know, impact your timeline.
Okay, so you're saying that November is probably out for...
Well, our meeting's on November seventh, and we can put that on the agenda now that we've informed the council that we want to make a decision, or you would like us to make a decision. Like Nolan said, we typically don't make decisions on communications from the public in this meeting, because you're hitting the council cold, and that's why they're kind of wanting to have more information about it. So that's fair to them, because they like to be informed before they make a decision, which I encourage. So I would like to just propose that we put it on the agenda for the seventh, and the council get informed, and any additional information you can get to us before the seventh.
That's all the information. What other information would you like me to gather? Because that's the information that I have.
I have several on the council that aren't, I have no one willing to do a motion, so I can't. Well, I can't, I can't not proceed. This is a council, city council meeting, and I have no...
That's fine, just let me know what other information you need, and then I can gather that for you.
Well, what a Parks and Rec's what this sounds like. For our standpoint, your anticipated numbers, you anticipate, I know it's tough.
I would love to give you numbers, but I cannot open registration or even get people excited about it if we can't do it.
And what do you think your expected coach to, participant ratio might be, to give some...
Well, they still have requirements for that, yeah.
Well, that's for us to know, so we don't have to be most...
Sure.
Honestly, that's, yeah, and then, of course, the insurance department will get it.
We encourage you to provide information prior to the seventh, of course.
Sure.
So anything that you bring to City Hall, Nolan and Misty and myself will make sure the council gets additional information. I think the insurance is kind of, and the coaching is the concern here.
I want to thank you for working on all this, because I know you've been working on it for a while.
Yep, but I just can't iron out those details without this approval.
This is close, though.
We can put it on our agenda for the seventh, and we can ask Krista to discuss it in Parks and Recreation meeting, it's also on the seventh.
Okay.
And she can bring a recommendation, one way or the other, to the council meeting that night.
Sounds good. I think it's a great idea. I like what you're doing with the kids and the gymnastics, so I thank you for putting so much work into it, and I'm definitely considering it closely, and I look forward to getting the insurance information for myself. Okay, what kind of insurance information? That's the thing, I can, I have an application, if you want to look at the application. I mean, I can't fill out the application...
That would be helpful.
Until I approve, or, you know...
We can make sure everybody on the council gets a copy of that.
Sure.
The only thing I would say is if you plan on doing this again next year, is that you come in earlier September, first October, because then we won't run into exactly the same thing we're running into now.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't know that you guys wanted anything from me besides just the information that I was giving out.
Yeah. We just hate to, until we get all the information, what, you know, if we say yes to you and don't have your insurance stuff, and then the next person comes in and we say, you've got to have insurance, they're going to say, well, you didn't for so and so.
Oh, we're planning on having insurance. I just can't apply for that. I can't give you anything regarding insurance until I get a place, you know?
As much information, as many numbers you can get to us between now and then will all be to the good, whatever.
Okay, and then we'll share it with the full council.
All right? Thank you.
If you're not going to open a poll or open it up to registration, take a poll on the street, how many kids want to vote.
I have done that. One year, I've had a cer, I, one year I got a hundred and seventy signatures, people interested in gymnastics in this community, and that was in one week. So I can bring that in and show you that petition that I had people sign, saying that they were interested. That was...
Things like that are helpful.
Three years ago.
I do need to keep it rolling here.
Sure.
One more detail, because the whole council's here. Our gymnastics program is one of our most popular summer programs we offer, so we do know there's a demand for gymnastics, at least in the summertime period.
That's good enough.
So it's nice to see, we try to fill the gap in the winter by sharing resources, sharing ideas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm at the addition of Item B, which is Dr. Sandra from Barnyard Veterinary. She is the person that we currently have our contract with for, for animal control.
Like Cindy said, my name is Sandra Wallard. I own Barnyard Veterinary Service and Supply and currently have the contract with the city. Can you hear me, by the way, or do I need to get closer?
Can I just shout?
Okay.
Let's take it out the stand.
Yeah, it's really meant to be for the rock star, isn't it?
All right, well, yeah.
Yes, there you go.
So I'm Sandra Wallard. I am the veterinarian and owner of Barnyard Veterinary Service and Supply. I currently have a contract with the city. I've just been seeing some things in the paper lately, and that were concerning to me, things that were not factual. It sounded like, I watched the last city council meeting on the video, and apparently there seems to be some questions. So I'm basically here not to have you guys make any decisions, but just to try and clear up some things, and if there's any public members here that need items cleared up. One of the things that the paper quoted last time was, it says, however Barnyard charges Battle Mountain Humane Society for new services, the veterinary provides, including shots, spaying, and a boarding fee, and Brock doesn't think this is right, since Battle Mountain Humane Society is a nonprofit, no-cost shelter. The boarding fee and the rabies is true, we do charge that, because when Battle Mountain comes in, they are acting as basically the new owner of that pet, adopting that pet, so they do get charged for that. However, the spaying and other shots, like distemper parvo, things like that, are not actually charged to them, so there's some misinformation there. Anyway, I just want to open it up to questions for anybody if there's concerns, or I have some information here that I brought with me. As far as the cats are concerned, we get very few cats that come through there. They are not being brought to my facility. On average, about three to four a year are being brought to my facility. I do get people who call all the time, asking, you know, have you seen our cats? And we're like, we don't even have any cats in the shelter. So, you know, according to the contract, it says stray animals, and I know in the past the city has dealt with the cat issue differently, although I do believe they are supposed to be coming in, but I'm just saying they're not coming in for the most part. So, you know, if there needs to be clarification, if this is something that needs to go to committee, things need to be revamped. There was also another thing in the paper that apparently, and I know this is county business, not city, but I will bring it to everyone's attention, that apparently, in starting in 2017, they're going to be giving Battle Mountain Humane Society $500 a month for the animal problem out in the county, but we spent, we charged over the last six years approximately $1,300 to the county for dogs they brought in. Say somebody was out on the highway, they hit somebody or got in a car wreck, they needed to do something with the dog that was in the car, so they would bring it into our facility. Well, over six years, they paid us approximately $1,300.
How many years?
Six.
Six.
Now, they're proposing that if they pay Battle Mountain for $500 per month, well, over six years, that comes to $36,000, so as taxpayers, I think we also need to be aware of that, maybe that's not the best use of funds there. And like I said, I just want to bring that to everybody's attention. I know that's not particularly a city matter, but I know they're talking about the cats. And we do have facilities for cats, we can always bring in more carriers for cats if that's deemed necessary. So, you know, if you guys, that's just a matter of discussion that you guys need to bring up at some point in time with the council, with the contract you have with us. I just want to clarify any untruths out there.
I got one question for you. If somebody brings in a dog, and you keep him for three days, and I come in as, and I want this dog, he's not mine, but I want him. Now, you're going to charge me for the days you had him, just like if I was the original owner?
That's been the way that we've done things in the past, because the contract requires that we keep him for three business days. So that may, the dog may actually be there, or the cat may actually be there for longer than three days, because it may fall over a weekend or holiday. So the dog is there for three business days. So what we've always done in the past is to go ahead, and if somebody comes forward, be it Battle Mountain or somebody else that wants to adopt a pet, to save it from euthanasia, which is the other alternative, then, they, yes, they have to pay the fees. They're basically acting now as the new owner.
Okay, now, instead of me as a citizen, the Humane Society comes and picks up the same dog, and he's been there for three days, you charge them for those three days also?
The same fee also, absolutely, and that's based on what we had discussed with the city as well, because and the city's not getting charged for that. Now, if the owner never comes forward, then yes, the city gets charged, billed for that.
What, you're saying then that the city doesn't get charged at all for those pets that go to Humane Society or to other people?
Correct, there's absolutely no double billing going on.
No, we have very few bills.
Okay, I just wanted to get that, because there was some, some numbers thrown around last time, and I wasn't real sure.
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
Yes, yeah, and like I said, what has been in the paper, and what I heard from the last video conference of the city council, it just seemed like there was a lot of questions and untruths out there, and even what was reported in the paper was a little off from what was actually said during a city council meeting, so I just wanted to clarify things.
Thank you.
And I know there's cats that are going out to Battle Mountain that I never see, and I don't know if they're determining that they're stray or feral, how they're determining that, but I think they're supposed to be coming through my facility, whether or not, so...
Okay, anybody, any additional questions?
I guess for your sake, we do plan to have this public safety discussed on Wednesday at 2:00 PM at City Hall, and there has been a conversation between Chief Close, who oversees the ACO, and the ACO officer as well, about our contract, our ordinance, how we're supposed to process our cats.
Okay, all right, so, and that's 2:00 PM?
2:00 PM, yes, at City Hall, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday? Okay, all right.
Thank you, Nolan, that's good information for everybody. Thank you, Dr. Sandra.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Item C, that was added, is Georgia.
Can you roll it for me?
We can never hear you.
Okay.
You're a quiet talker. All right.
There you go. Okay, this, ah, much better. We had an issue at the community concert, and they brought it to our attention, that everyone should contact the city council members about the speakers and the lights here in the Mueller Center, and I wanted to just let everyone know that we have addressed that in our admin meeting, and we're looking at possibly refurbishing a computer board, but also some other issues that go along with it. So it is being taken seriously, and I wanted to let the public know that we are paying attention. That's all.
All right, I'm taking my mic back. Yeah, they gave me the good one.
This one doesn't... Is it even on?
It's on, you can hear it.
I think this one is the battery.
Was it red light? Some of them were red.
Two seconds.
Should be green, though, right?
No, it's on. It's red.
I don't think it was on. She has a red light now.
Yes. Should be mine.
All right, I think it's on. I accept it.
Okay, now you can hear me.
All right, I have no other communications from the public.
May I?
Yes, please. Just state your name and...
Good evening, I'm Jackie Garrity, recipient of one of the Business Facade Improvement Grants, which was just completed, and I am here to say thank you for helping us do that, and helping us improve the downtown, and improve everybody's downtown Main Street Hot Springs. You know, just helps with the pride of the community, and I do want to say that I got every single penny out of that last awning. This windstorm would have taken the old one off. All of the stitching was gone, there were, you could see through the front edge, so thank you, I wouldn't have done it without that grant. So we would have had a naked awning for a while, so thank you.
You do not want naked awnings, so that's why we just don't do that.
And I also wanted to, if I may, I know you've tabled the item about the lighting, can I just share an opinion, because I will be out of town November seventh?
Are you the gal who dropped off the information at the council table about?
No.
No, I was a shorter gal.
Okay.
Was it who?
I don't know who she was. I've never seen her before.
Okay.
She came in and disappeared, just...
My humble opinion is that the very nicest things in our downtown right now, among others, but the things that you notice right away are the very nice lights and the pods. That really makes our downtown. I just went through Worland, Wyoming, spent several days out in Wyoming, and they obviously have a progressive council that worked with the Wyoming DOT, and they have done a beautiful refurbishing job. It was just lovely, and since it's a kind of a topic of conversation at our house, we really looked at that, truly appreciated it, spent a lot of time walking on their little Main Street, that's where we had lunch. So it's very attractive for visitors. I think that years down the road, there isn't going to be one person that sees beautiful lights and says, what were they thinking, spending that extra money? But I think if we get the big ugly ones, there are probably many people who will say, what were they thinking by saving a little bit of money? So I would like for you to take a little bit extra of my taxpayer money and invest in some beauty for the downtown project. So thank you for the grant, I hope that that sees more years, and many more people applying, and think about the rest. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications from the public? Okay. We already did the hearings, I'm going to jump back up to personnel, there's just AMB, both from the plunge. We're hearing a very loud noise.
That's the wind.
It's the wind.
Yeah, we're assuming it's the wind, but it's...
How big was we combining, or on the same time?
I'll second that.
Does it matter that maybe that one isn't spelled right?
It is spelled right.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay, it looks different. She knew somebody was going to ask her that.
Okay, never mind, so sorry, that's all right.
Thank you, Andrea, for...
Sorry.
And I second that motion, too. This is kind of an...
I was going to say, you just made...
Oh, I can make a motion then, that we approved both.
No, seconded.
Okay.
I made a motion to combine them, Bob made a motion to second them.
Oh, we didn't combine and approve?
Yeah, we, that's, that's the best. You made the motion to combine, just go and make the motion to combine and approve, and let's do it all in one, otherwise you've got to do two votes, and it'd be the same as doing it separately.
We wanted to.
This is the music part, I'm sure, yes. So I have a motion to combine and approve, or, do I have a second?
Kramer, you did it.
I'll, I'll in favor, well, she did it, too.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Caroline, do you have an admin and finance committee report for us?
Nolan's going to give that for me tonight. Thank you, Nolan.
Okay.
Krista, take your mic.
What?
I'm taking your mic.
Okay.
Okay. We started the meeting off on October 10th with a presentation by phone from our auditors for the 2015 audit, so Donna, Duncan, and Associates called in and went over that with us. At the November 7th meeting, you'll have your presentation by the auditors, and then we'll roll on, onto the next one, for 2016, when that time comes. We reviewed some old business, the basic investment policy, I believe that's on the new business for tonight's meeting. Jason was there from the Southern Hills Golf Course, I think he's also up here tonight to speak if needed, to go over irrigation upgrades at the golf course. You know, for this year and next year, we budgeted away $40,000 to start doing these improvements. We're ready to start tapping into that fund for some initial upgrades. Again, Jason will be here if that item comes to the business if you have further questions. We received an update from Misty for finance, and then we talked about a contract to be approved for Lawyer McNair, who's going from paid hourly or paid for the services, now to do in-kind contribution or in-kind payments in lieu of service or in lieu of cash, which would be a membership and punch card, I think that's on the agenda for tonight later. We discussed homelessness in Hot Springs per the communications from the public from Kim Moyer. It was reviewed in both this committee and also, I believe, safety, and conversation among council members with interested stakeholders and also the city's affiliations. The problem of homelessness doesn't appear to be as severe to require a comprehensive approach by the city. I was asked to clarify that we do donate to 211, which is a helpline, it's a free phone support line. They offer crisis support services directing homeless to where they can seek help. We do have a women and children's shelter locally where they can seek assistance or a resource there, and of course, Rapid City has theirs. There's also the Ministerial Association, which is not actively seeking support from the city, and does not feel the same concerns that I think Kim Moyer expressed in her comments. We reviewed the streetlights for the 2020 project, the cost, the different options there, and also the design standards, and how our current ones do not meet the DOT lighting specs, so we'll have to do either 50-foot aluminum poles or pay the difference to do architectural lighting, and that was tabled for tonight's meeting. We looked at the draft for the upcoming appropriation ordinance, it's going to be first reading on November 7th. And also, Misty gave an update on unclaimed property, reported that to the state, how we haven't done that in the past, but we will start doing that in the future to get us in line with our existing statutes. I do know that Municipal League may be lobbying on our behalf to modify that, but there's a good chance that's not going to happen for a while, so until then, we'll do our due diligence. And then, the last item we talked about, the, is actually the light board here at the Mueller Center that is having some difficulty functioning, so we are looking to, in the near future, either replace that, or, sorry, not replace, but to refurbish that, get it cleaned out, in the meantime, do a kind of a workaround switch, or the long-term solution or a larger solution would be maybe a partnership with a private entity to enhance not just the lighting, but also the sound as well. And that's all in our report for that committee meeting.
Thank you, Nolan. Caroline, Caroline's to thank you. It was a very productive meeting, and I appreciate you following up on the 211 services that the city does already donate to. I'm going to move on to the Airport Advisory Committee in Georgia.
The next meeting will be Friday, October 28th, at 8:00, morning after the airport. I was just going to state that ed-identities and subsequent municipal fees for the airport, and the only thing that they're still looking at are the Pidley contract and tax evasion plan. He said it was a good meeting, getting that, too.
Good, thank you. All right, Item C, the Custer Falls River Regional Waste Management District, Andrea.
Next one.
Next one.
Yep.
Is it the second Tuesday or something? No, that's, well, too far.
That's well too far, right, yeah. No, it's a Thursday. No, I don't remember. Let me report back on that on November 7th.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's always a fun one. Appreciate it. Caroline, do you have an update for the Downtown Historic Preservation Commission?
With your permission, I have a report now given on delivery segments, if that may be.
I find that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cara, Evans Plunge Advisory Committee.
My next meeting is November 17th at 7:00 PM. I do have some numbers for September, excuse my sinus issue here, I hope you can understand me. Our year-to-date revenue, end of September, was $646,416.50. Year-to-date expense, $540,092.72. And we'll hope to see anybody, everybody's welcome, at 7:00 PM on November 17th, Upper Level, Evans Plunge.
Thank you very much. Krista, Parks, Recreation, Ambientification, Cultural Development.
Yes, I asked Nolan, and he went to the Department of Parks and Recreation meeting before me, as I was intending to be there, so I referred to him to give you a update.
Luckily, that was the last meeting, so we'll meet again on November 7th. The way they work is the first and third Monday, or the first Monday of the month we meet, which coincides with the first council meeting, so no update for the time being. I mean, day to day, our parks guys are starting to mow the grass less and get to other maintenance items, including... and get to other maintenance items, including getting ready for snowfall. The equipment worked on there. But the next actual parks meeting will be, if Teresa's still here, the 3 o'clock, November 7th, at City Hall.
Which will also include the, apparently, the referrals of Teresa. So I advise anybody to please attend, if they're interested in that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay, thank you, Krista. Kim, did you wanna do a report? Kim Barbieri, the city planner.
We have a meeting this Wednesday at 7 o'clock at the City Hall. We're having two public hearings. One is for a variance application on Dakota Street, and the other one is a request for a right-of-way abandonment on Tillison Avenue.
Thank you, Kim. And those items will both be coming to the council, so you be aware, if with recommendations?
No, neither one will.
Neither one will?
Only if the Tillison gets approved, it would. I don't, I'm not sure where, how it will go.
Right, I mean, based on the outcome of that meeting, it may come, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna move to public safety for the last time. It'll be Tim Tesher. Going forward, it'll be Bob Nelson.
And it will be Bob's to give the next report, because our next meeting is Wednesday.
Time goes that way, all right. So I wanna thank Tim for his service for, in the public safety. He will still be supporting Bob, but Bob will be the chairperson for public safety going forward. Thank you for accepting that. Back to you, Tim, Public Works.
We did have a meeting on 11th. We had a large agenda, one item. We're still in the process of trying to figure out what we're gonna do with the alley behind the State Farm office. And we do have some numbers now, so I'm hoping... I'm gonna have to check on just, I know what the price would be if we do it ourselves. And I guess I'll have to check and see if, because of the amount that we're talking about, and if we're doing it in-house, does it actually have to come before the council? I don't know.
Technically, it does not, no. Given our procurement policy and their budget, it does not. But that in mind, if it does go before the council for input, it's easier to have support for, by understanding and experience.
In that case, it will be on the agenda for the November 7th meeting.
Okay. Great.
That was it. Thank you.
That was a good meeting. Short, but sweet. All right, thank you. Skylar, Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee.
We have not had a meeting, and we haven't scheduled our next one yet. I'll let you know.
Did you guys approve the rules?
We're still working on the mission statement and the new course rules.
Okay. And you'll let us know when the next meeting is? Okay, thank you. Andrea, the Tuesday night meeting, Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah. They purchased a new fire hose there and got a new grill for one of the vehicles. There were, what? Oh. They, there was 12 dispatches this month, which was great. One of them was a false alarm. On October 10th was fire prevention at the school, which was a great turnout. They had, the kids are always excited about that. I know my son came home and had a great time. They were at the homecoming parade of the age, which was very successful. Their host testing got completed, and they passed just fine. Their sweatshirts were ordered. They wanted to make sure that whoever is at the fire department, make sure they close their windows, just because they don't wanna heat the outside. The open house from 6:00 to 8:00 was successful. They had truck rides. They talked about different grants that would be possibly coming up. They did little skits. They like blindfolded kids and showed them why they should not hide under the bed during a fire, so that was good. Again, my son came home and had that. And they talked about the Saturday, the car show, which was at Centania Park, which was also a very good turnout. They were bringing a truck for that. And they approved to have 12 new sets of bunker gear ordered. And boots will also be ordered as well. That's all I got.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Can I add a fast comment to the percommittee report? And I'm not quite sure that this is really the proper venue, but as a very nearby landowner to last Friday's occurrence, I would really certainly appreciate Andrea giving a big thank you to not only the Volunteer Fire Department, but all of the other emergency responders, because from my vantage point, that was one nasty fire.
It could've been way worse.
Oh, yes, it could've been way worse.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I was observing most of it.
Oh, dang. Yes, I will absolutely pass that on. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sure everyone's watching me on TV, so huge shout-out to all of them.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to ordinances. Item A, second reading of Ordinance 1168 and ordinance to amend 26-8-08. Water rates and billing modifications. Again, this is the second reading. Just to remind you, it did pass two weeks ago with the five votes, because that was the majority of the council. And we were a little confused, because some ordinances require two-thirds, but this one did not, so we did. And the paper also clarified that, which we appreciate. So we are moving on to the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, that.
Discussion. Kim, did you wanna?
I'm just here if you have any questions. I know that I talked with Bob over the concerns that he had at the last meeting, and it was a line in my memo that I had put in the wrong word in my description. So it definitely changed the meaning of that sentence. So I think we have a clear understanding of the ordinance change to 26-8-08, the water rates and billing. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
And I would like to add, because of that particular sentence, I wanna thank Kim and Barb for giving of your time to answer my questions. I appreciate that, so I wanted to acknowledge it publicly. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim or otherwise? Because if not, I'm gonna ask, I have a motion in a second, so I'm gonna ask a finance officer for a roll call vote.
Cara Hagan? Yes. Georgia Holmes? Yes. Andrea Kramer? Yes. Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carol Lamb Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Kristis Belain?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel? Yes. Thank you.
Motion carried, thank you. Remaining in ordinances, Item B. This is the first reading of Ordinance 1169 and ordinance to amend 18-8-03. Vacant structure registration requirements. And this is one that I really want you guys to take your time on.
I'll make a motion that we accept this ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
And then Bob or Andrea?
Hey, Bob, maybe, or Bob.
I have a motion in a second, so we can have a discussion. And thank you for staying, Kim.
Sure. I'll just give you a real quick summary that was kind of summarized in the memo I gave you. Basically, as we've been heading into a number of these community meetings, especially with the comp plan and the work with the Dakota Resources, at every single meeting, it doesn't matter if you're part of housing, if you're part of the tourist commission, health and wellness, or business. The thing that comes up over and over again is we have to do something about the vacant buildings. They're affecting the way people are perceiving our town, and they're affecting actually our housing stock and our ability to have a real good feeling of security within our neighborhoods. Whenever the Stirkly Building was removed, we found evidence of people living there, of building fires there, of drug use, and other parties that had gone on there. Those are the kind of things that happen when you have vacant buildings and they're not being monitored well. Right now, our current vacant building registration just requires you to register it once and then register and basically deregister it when you're done being vacant, whether you sell it, whether you begin use of it, or something like that. It leaves a huge hole in what's actually accurate information. We have at some points, you know, gotten some information, but I know that there are clearly more vacant buildings out there that are not on our list, and there are vacant buildings on our list that shouldn't be vacant, because they're actually being used. So what we're trying to do is twofold, is to try and get a vacant building registration that is accurate and gives us accurate information, especially to first responders and for folks like me who need to know who's the owner, who's the local contact information, how do we get ahold of them, and who's responsible for maintenance. Other things that we'd like to know are, is it just completely vacant? What's the condition of the building? Is it something that we should worry about, or is it being used for storage? Just general things like that. So if there, let's say if there's a fire at a vacant building, our fire department will have that information, knowing that, oh, it's paint storage. We're gonna have, we're gonna have a possibility of explosions. We're gonna have a possibility of other things. So these are things that we need to know, and this information will be shared. I've already talked with the sheriff's office, the police office, the fire department, and they're all very, very excited about this getting passed so that they can have that, that extra one-up before they head out to a call on a vacant building. The second thing it does is it gives, for me, a tool and a way of creating a one-on-one relationship. Well, I'll be talking to these people once a year now, whether they like it or not. And, but to start trying to develop that positive relationship. Hey, what are you gonna be doing this year? You said that, yeah, you didn't wanna keep it vacant for long, so how can I help you? What did you need? Do you need to know about grants? Hey, this person's looking for a building just like yours. You know, those kind of things can't happen now, because we don't have that contact information. We don't have those leads. I have tried reaching out in the past with newsletters, talking about how great things are turning around in Hot Springs. Hey, if you haven't been here a while, you'd love to stop by, if you can't believe what's happening here, you wanna be a part of it. We want you to be a part of it. So this will also allow us to get that contact. So if you have any questions at all on the ins and outs of it, I know it did go through the Administrative Committee, the Public Safety Committee, the Historical Commission, and who else did I go through, Bob? Is there anybody else? Okay. Okay, I hit those three main groups. Two of the whole people. Yeah. And actually, and I will say that in every single group, they really took it to task, and we did a lot of wordsmithing. And I thank Bob a lot. He sat down with me one afternoon, and we wordsmithed some of the stuff that I was even having a hard time with. He really, I think we really, really made this a good ordinance that's well thought out. So if you have any questions, let us know.
I have one last question. Sometimes you'll find signs on the windows of houses that are empty. Is that something that you were doing, or is that...
No, actually, whenever there's a building that's in foreclosure, what they have now are property maintenance corporations that will go around and they'll put the sticker on the door and say, "Okay, this is owned by such-and-such mortgage company, but do not call them, only call us if there's a problem with this property." We're basically gonna have all their information on our list. It sometimes makes it easier, sometimes makes it more difficult to work through. It just depends on how invested they are in this area of estate.
Doesn't like to stay on.
Okay, thanks.
Did you need a mic?
No.
Okay. I do wanna thank you. I think you spent, and I didn't know Bob spent so much time as well on this ordinance. I do think it's important, and I really appreciate the effort that you put into that.
If anybody ever wants to just sit down, I can go over some of the changes specifically. If you'd like to know the whys and wherefores and what we were thinking, but it's a lot to go over right now. So just if you want to, I'll make myself available to you.
And I do think it's an issue we need to address in Hot Springs. We do have vacant structures, and they do create environments that could potentially be safety hazards and definitely are usually unsightly too. So because this is an ordinance, Misty, I'm gonna throw it back to you for a roll call vote, unless there's other questions or comments. Okay.
Cara Hagan? Yes. Georgia Holmes? Yes. Andrea Kramer? Yes. Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Carol Lamb Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Kristis Belain?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel? Yes. Thank you.
Please make sure you understand the ordinance before we go to the second reading next time. Thank you again, Kim. I'm gonna move on to new business. Discussion of possible motion to approve Evans Plunge billboard lease agreement with Mr. Gary Romi.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carried, and this is an existing billboard, right?
Correct.
Item B, discussion of possible motion to approve temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Winter Circle for the Chamber of Commerce Ag banquet on November 19, 2016. And the difference here is that Winter Circle has a license. The Boys and Girls Club do not.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will discuss Item C on the 7th. Item D, discussion and possible motion to adopt city of Hot Springs basic investment policy. And Misty, if you wanna...
I'll second it.
Misty, do you wanna give an overview, or are there any questions?
Pretty basic.
Pretty basic, it's the basic one.
If you have any questions, let me know. You'll get, not, it says quarterly reports, but you'll get the monthly reports with your financials. It's the new report you've seen a couple times already, so...
And it is required by law?
Yeah, it's supposed to have it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, discussion of possible motion to approve expense of restricted 212 funds for Southern Hills Golf Course irrigation updates. And Jason is here, if you have any questions.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Questions, comments? Jason came all the way out for it.
Jason, you and I chatted today, and on the used option, you have written on the sheets that 4,400, if we pick it up. And my understanding was your preference was to go ahead and pick them up yourself. So we'd be looking at a cost of closer to $20,000 than $24,000, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Because the quote was for if the company that we're buying the other material from would be picking it up, and they would mark it up at additional $400 per piece of equipment, so another $4,400.
Thank you.
I think several of us have already been briefed on this a couple times, so I'm not expecting a lot of questions, but please feel free to ask Jason anything. I think he's really done a lot of homework here and really tried to maximize the money that we're setting aside for irrigation at the golf course, so...
I was wondering why he's waited so long, given I discussed this a long time ago.
That's a good question, Tim. And I think this was just a great opportunity that I came by. You know, these controllers definitely need to be updated, but we still have other components of the irrigation system that we're gonna be updating.
Yeah, I understand. I just had to give you our time.
Thanks for all your hard work and for showing up.
Thank you.
Skylar, was anything... Do you have any questions or concerns? You're looking forward to them, right?
I am, yes.
Just so everybody knows, Jason, I think we need to tell everybody this is actually part of our plan to get this done. The master plan.
Yeah, that's correct. It was on the master plan, plus the irrigation designer, the independent irrigation designer, noticed it right away.
Thanks.
Necessity.
So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jason. Item F, discussion of possible motion to authorize finance officer to reconcile water deposit balances and report those less than 10 years old to state unclaimed property division using the informal voluntary disclosure agreement.
I'll make a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion to authorize the finance officer.
Do I have a second, Adrian?
I can.
She didn't hear you. So I have a motion and a second, and I want to make sure people really understand what we're doing here. So I hope you have questions if you don't understand it. But Misty did a great job informing everybody. So I will move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Misty and council. I think we're doing the right thing there. Item G, discussion of possible motion to approve the travel request of Officer Tramp to attend the DARE instructor course. And note the dates, it would be in June of 2017 and fewer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I want to thank the police department for bringing the DARE program to Hot Springs. I think it's needed and appreciate their efforts there. Misty, I'm going to move to the finance officer report.
All right, well, this is not on my report, but also to thank the community for supporting that DARE program, because it is funded 100% by donations from our community, so...
Very good.
Our police officers for doing it and our community for supporting it. But here's my real report, sorry. I handed you a memo at the beginning of the meeting. I know you hate that, because you don't have any information, but you don't need to act now. It was just informational surrounding the use of a consent agenda. So please ask questions. I think it's a good idea. I think it's something we might like to consider. Georgia and I already talked about it a little bit, and she had some feedback, but I'd like all of you to consider adopting a rule of order where we can use a consent agenda. Because I just learned about it, and I thought it was really neat.
And other cities do use that.
It is, it's a tool we can use. No one stole my thunder about the audit readout on November 7th, but we did have an initial meeting with our auditors at our admin finance. And Donna Danker will come on November 7th and report on their audit findings. I think you'll all be happy with the results of the progress that we made between the '13, '14, and '15 that we had done. I am, I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've had. Thank you for allowing me to continue on that path and reconcile our outstanding water deposits. I know that Barb is also thanking you, although she's not here to say it, but it's something that's been weighing heavily on her, and we'll be happy to have that cleaned up. I wanted to let you all know that we received a commitment from Rural Development for our Boulder Falls loan. It's just one small step in the mountain that is doing...
Still.
A street assessment project, but yeah, it was a big step. So we've gotten that commitment, but we are still working through our engineering designs and approvals for our bids and specs before we can go out to bid on that project. But we're moving forward. Also, remind you all of the board development workshop, October 31st, right here at the Mueller Center, from 1:00 to 5:00. I sent out an email with a questionnaire from the facilitator today. If you would please complete it before the October 31st workshop. And Nolan talked a little bit about the last appropriation ordinance for the year. We'll be at the next council meeting. There'll be a lot of information on there. I'll try to also include a memo that explains most of the items, but please ask me if you have any questions, once you get your packet prior to voting on it, because it's going to be a big one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Misty. Nolan, is the administrator report?
Sure. First off, for the public and for the press, our ordinances, just because we passed our second reading tonight doesn't mean it's in effect tomorrow morning. It does take 20 days after publication before it goes into effect. And so if you have a vacant property who is getting that $18-plus expense, that'll still be another 20-plus days plus publication time. So that's when those go into effect. We'll have our second reading then of the one that was approved in the first reading, the next November 7th meeting. Just a reminder to the council, if you have questions on the agenda once you get your packets, definitely ask us about them. You know, we'd like you to be informed the night of the meeting when you go into, to be able to make a decision on that night. Some of these are more time-sensitive than others. Luckily, the DOT project, I mean, even though it's 2020, they are asking for us to get us our recommendations or our... What we expect of them to do as soon as possible. They're already working on the lighting design. So the sooner we know 50-foot versus 35-foot, the sooner they can start putting one on the ground, and we can start saying, we want weight-bearing signage here, here, or here. So the pieces are already moving for the DOT. In fact, we had a meeting today with the DOT. It went from most of the day, actually, and tomorrow it's the same story, another all-day DOT meeting for that project. The facade grant update, we heard from Jackie tonight. She's done with hers. We have two more businesses still working on theirs. The old Verizon building is setback by the wind we had this weekend. They're supposed to be delivered and installed on Saturday. Those will be up by there this week at the very latest. And then Red Rock, as you guys all see, is making some very noticeable changes to their facade. They did encounter some poor quality behind the front of their building, and so they're going to replace that and I'll, I think, cover them with a tin-style... Sorry to interrupt by the historic preservation commission, but a tin-style finish. That should make the front of that really nice, as well as the light fixtures on the exterior. That should all take place here within this month and next month to wrap up before year-end, so we can get them their money for our calendar year. I mentioned a little bit about the fire that took place on Friday. I spoke with Steve Esser of Wildland Fire. He will get us a full summary or report once that's available. We will post it on our city police page, share it on our city page to give the public an idea as to what caused it. For the public attending still, you may still see smoke or smoldering occurring up there. The fire crews are already monitoring it around the clock, so no need to report it. It is being under surveillance until it's fully out and no longer any embers or remaining smoke or smoldering. We do plan, weather permitting, to burn along Fall River, assuming that we get drier conditions and the wind health certainly helps with that, but also cooler temperatures as well. Right now, we're still getting some precipitation, believe it or not, and still getting those 60 to 70-degree days. So as the river starts to dry out, we anticipate a November burning of the river, coordinated and performed by our volunteer fire department. Whenever we go to do this, we will fully notify the public days leading up to the anticipated time we intend to do this. It's all weather-dependent. We anticipate university up that channel through the Battle Mountain Avenue Bridge. If we go further than that, that's all weather-dependent. We've already stopped clearance through DENR, and they're okay with our proposal. So it's all now weather-dependent when this happens. And the last thing is, a lot of my time now shifting ahead to 2017 is consumed by getting estimates for our 2017 projects. That includes Evans Plunge, an ADA access ramp or lift, also a new ceiling, painting of the ceiling. But now with the hail in August, we're working on a bitspec package for the roof above it, above the pool, and then also some stucco repair. Other areas, the police vehicle, we just got this 2016 Charger. We are looking at a 2017 vehicle also for our budget conversation. And so there may be, on the upcoming meeting then, the formal approval to commit to the state bid list for the 2017 vehicle. I think what was discussed was a truck. So the bid for the state's already been awarded. We know exactly how much the truck would cost us. It's just putting our name on that list to go ahead with that purchase. Once the truck is available, it looks like in February, the delivery time. So it'll be in calendar year 2017. And that is all I have for my report.
Thank you, Nolan. Okay, for my report, I wanted to thank, I think it was Bob, Tim, and Georgia, if anybody else went to the municipal aid training. I'm sorry I didn't see you there, but I saw the three of you. And I do appreciate you going. We did get some good training this year. And maybe more than we wanted to on math, but a lot of the discussion was around emergency management and project managing and math. We had a lot of discussion on that, and it's definitely opened my eyes to that issue much more than it was before. I also wanted to thank the firefighters who worked on the Battle Mountain fire. Like Bob, I have property not too far from there myself, and it's always nice to see when the fire is contained around your own property. So they did a great job. They worked all weekend, and I think they're still out there, some of them. But it is on mostly state land. So we're hoping we're okay here. I wanted to also thank the firefighters for my first fire engine truck ride last Thursday. They had a great program there that Andrea alluded to. I was very, very impressed with the effort that they put into that night and the training that they do for not only the youth, but for adults. It was very impressive. I'm very pleased to see the facade grant activities going on that Jackie brought up earlier. I think we all benefit when we... And I don't know where this memo came from, but when we all take care of our property, it benefits everybody. Just another fire note, it's still very dry. I know we got a little bit of rain, but just really be careful with anything that's likely to cause a fire. And we are not going into executive session tonight, so I am done.
I'll make a motion.
I'd like to say, I would recommend to any council member, these municipal aid deals that come up. I don't believe that the next one will be in the spring now, but you really want to go if at all, if possible. I mean, they are, they really pass out some... And it's generalized, so it fits every city. It's not, they don't pick out Rapid City and Sioux Falls. What they talk about affects all, so I've been to three of them now, and I've come out every one with... Man, you come back here and you just want to start yelling and screaming and jumping out and changing stuff. But I fully recommend them to anybody.
We had the tour of the Murph and Rapid, too. That was really interesting.
I didn't do that, but I do agree that it had some really good training this year that I wish more of us received.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
See you on the 7th, if not before. Thank you.